You ready? I'm ready. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Please, everyone, continue to make your way in. We're starting on time for those folks that are joining remotely to be able to witness and share in our opportunity. Let's bring some more folks up front, even if you're staff. Let's kind of fill in the crowd. We got all the wallflowers back there? All the wallflowers, all the back folks. Come on up. We set up the chairs. Come join us. Doing great. Come on. Come on, Stacy. You're almost here. Pull it on forward. Well, good evening. I'd like to thank the Coronado staff. It's always great to be up here at what I like to say, the top of the hill. I've made the mistake of trying to ride my bike up here on the weekend, and you've got to get in gears much lower than I think I have to make it up the last stretch of that hill, but I'm a better person for it. I'd like to acknowledge the board members who are here this evening. I think I see President Mel Packham, and I think I see Director Ott. Is that correct? Any other board members that I haven't seen? My staff, if my staff could raise your hand, all District 11 staff. Yes, thank you for folks that don't work directly at Central Office. Thank you for being here. This is a first in a series of town halls where we seek to be able to share the visions that we have for major items. The first one here will be budget. We'll also bring school choice and enrollment to a future date as well, and then we're still planning the other two. The idea here is to share what our vision is and then open up the floor for questions and comments. And then, of course, we'll also have some general Q and A as we near the end of the hour for folks who might have something more topical on mind that they might want to have a question for. So with that, I want to first, I think President Joe Schott from the CSEA just walked in as well. If we can get an acknowledgement to Joe in the back. Thanks for being here. You're on camera, so you got to wave. Thank you, Joe. And then I think Thad's here as well. Is that right? So thanks to the CSEA staff also for joining. Who in the room? I met a security personnel from Robert from Coronado. Is any of the custodial staff here from Coronado? Is there anyone? I'd love to be able to give a shout out for making the space available and just how clean and inviting it is and for setting that up. So Brandon, if we can make sure we get that back to the Coronado team for thanking them for that. I'm going to start with a couple of documents here. The first one I would love to get you all to take a look at is this beautiful graphic of our fund balance reallocation that we with the board were able to do about three weeks ago at a board meeting. And I just want to talk about how, and Director Daniels just walked in as well acknowledging another board member. Hi, darling. I just want to go over these in brief just to talk about how District 11, in partnership with the board, in support of the community staff and students, is realigning dollars to go after what we believe are the big rocks that'll help us on enrollment, achievement, and engagement. And so just real briefly, I had the good fortune of meeting Jessica, who's our kindergarten teacher at Wilson, and I said, I just want to start. We are all in on early education. So you'll see the first one up there is preschool. Last week, in the Coronado Cluster at Chapita, we opened up our first additional preschool based upon demand that we are getting from the community that said, we need more access to preschool opportunities. So now we know that the state is considering universal pre-K, but we didn't want to wait for the state, and we wanted to reallocate some of these dollars that we had through fund balance to beat the state to this initiative. We also know that it's not easy, and I want to give big thanks and accolades to all the staff members who helped make this happen. We talked about this in July, and we opened this class in the last week of October, first week in November. And so if we were to wait for the state to make this initiative next year, we would also be probably four or five months before we were ready to open that class. And that would put us in a negative position to the enrollment situation that we have with our surrounding districts. I don't want to have to wait and get beat by District 20 and District 49, who have the ability to move slightly faster on some of these initiatives. So we're all in on preschool. We hope to open at least six new classes by the first of the year, and then we have targeted another six classrooms afterwards. I want to thank the board for initiating an after-school program in their budget last year and that we're going to double the number of after-school programs. We went from seven, I'm sorry, we went from nine to 17 now with this fund balance transfer, which will give us the opportunity to create extended learning opportunities for students in all our priority schools. And if you're not understanding some of the methodology, we believe very strongly that we need to increase the amount of time and the quality of instruction that we get for our students that are furthest behind. Director Bankus has also joined us. Thank you, Director Bankus, for being here. We're also going to introduce some new training and some platforms on customer service and how we engage with our community. I believe very strongly that there are very active voices in our community that are not getting access to spaces where they can share their voice and their face. So I am very thankful for all of you who've taken time out of your evening tonight to be here, but I know that there are countless others that are either watching digitally or wish that they could be here and might like to be able to chime in. So we're going to try and move our engagement and interactions with the community into the 21st century and start thinking about mapping the voices in the community by their cell phones and where they're calling from. And we'll see, what I know what we'll see, which is we have very strong voices in certain parts of our town, which means that we need to double down on engaging in other parts of our town because we seek to serve all students and all families, both equitably and equally, in District 11. A big shout out to the safety and security team. John's here and David's here, and I got a chance to meet Robert in the back. If you don't feel safe in District 11, you should. We have a very strong combination of what I like to call active and passive opportunities and how we're considering safety, and we're going to continue to increase that. We have a company right now that's doing an assessment to look at both active and passive restraints and opportunities for us to continue to project ourselves in a safe manner. Every day I'm talking to safety on some Safe to Tell or opportunity for us to engage with the school directly and understand what are the challenges that they have in projecting a safe learning and teaching environment. I meet with a lot of families in the safety realm, and I can tell you that each time I meet with a student, I say, do you know what we're here to talk about today? And I always say, do you know what my number one priority is in the school district? And they say, to keep me safe. And I said, I want my number one priority to be that you get highest quality teaching and learning, but I'm spending too much time on safety. So we seek to be able to double down and make our schools even safer than they are already. I'm super excited about our discretionary hot lunch again next week. Go to the poll, vote your conscience. If you're all for more free lunches, great. If you're not for it, that's great, too. District 11 is so invested in ensuring that knowing that fed, well-nutritioned children learn better, that we're going to put aside a pot of money for those families that just missed that free and reduced lunch cutoff. We can cover a hot meal for every one of those children when they need that instead of going hungry. I am the father of three adult children, all three of whom would readily admit that they often skipped lunch because they didn't have money, even though I had gobs of money to be able to give them. They just never remember to ask for it, and so the idea of kids not eating is not good. So we want to make sure we double down on that. We've got some individual H-Fatch solutions. Terry, are you here? I saw you, Terry Siemens in the back and our F-Talk team. We're thinking a little bit differently about this right now. We're in some serious need of preventative maintenance and new buildings in the future. But what we don't want to do is always have a $30 million price tag in providing the appropriate learning environment for staff and for students. We know that we have shoulder months in August and in May that it gets hot, and we think that we can provide some temporary and part-time solutions to those spaces without having to bankrupt the district to do it. So we've set some money aside for that. I'm going to skip over the Mitchell promise. I'll come back to that. Broadcast systems, you know, we just know that the kids need access to technology like we have never even seen before, and so we're making investments in our high schools to be able to do that. And track and turf, Coronado was already slated for a new track and field, and so now we'll add Mitchell and Dougherty to that as well. So and the idea there is, is we lose a lot of quality students because they get lured into the sports opportunity in a neighboring district. Gary Berry Stadium is one of the finest facilities I have ever seen. It's just really hard for me to think that I'm going to get there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for practice. I can't wait to get there Saturday for the game, but if you just, I live down by Palmer. You go down by that field by Palmer High School there, and that's not some place that a kid really wants to practice to think that they're going to wait until Saturday's game. And so for a small price tag, we're able to do that. But I want to end on the Mitchell promise, which is, we just understand that the world is changing. You know, we're introducing more pre-K opportunities, and so we're a pre-K to 12 system. I really think that the future of the United States is that for the taxes that we pay, we ought to be a pre-K to 14 system, which every kid in America ought to be getting all the way through an associate's degree and then figure if it requires two more years for a bachelor's or if they can get a certification from that associate's degree. But we're going to start to blur that line, and we've got a foundation opportunity with the Dakota Foundation through Pike's Peak State College, where we're going to do 100% match with them to cover the costs of any Mitchell graduate in the next three years to be able to go to Pike's Peak State College free of tuition. Now, the great news there is that it's a wonderful way for us to invest specifically in Mitchell, and then what we can do is use that as a pilot program. And as we see success and takers of students, because we're putting some criteria on that, attendance, GPA, some concurrent enrollment, kids have to be invested in their own future for us to put money up against that. But as it works in Mitchell, we will grow that program to encompass all of our comprehensive high schools. So that's all the great stuff that we did a couple of weeks ago. So pat yourselves on the back for helping to be supportive of that in your own individual ways. I know I see a lot of familiar faces from both the DAC Budget Committee and the Fund Balance Task Force. On the other side here, I just want to introduce briefly the budget build timeline that we have for this year, very similar to years prior. As we come to January, we'll do a true-up based upon enrollment to make sure that we have the right number of staff against the right number of positions. The good news is, is we think we actually are no more than 100 kids less than we were this time last October, which is about 600 kids more than we expected to be. So we crushed our projection, and if I'm lucky, we actually are at the same numbers last October. So we're bottoming out the decreasing enrollment. We're in a place now where D11 is starting to get ready to grow again, and we're going to stop talking about losing kids. So but we still have to do a true-up in January on that. And then as we get into February, we'll push the state-level budget down to schools for schools to understand how much money is available for them based upon their enrollment for this year and our projection for them next year. And then we start to reach out to you all with the community. I want a very active and transparent way that we do this. I'm not saying it wasn't that way before, but we will do individual budget meetings around the city with the DAC Budget Committee. And so who hears? Amanda, where are you? Amanda Huber? There you are. Hi, Amanda. So I'll actually ask Amanda to help build a schedule where we're moving away from a lot of the virtual meetings in the spring, that we can do some active ones and maybe try and do them around the city to make sure that we're getting voice from all parts of our city as we build our budget. But that'll be super exciting for us to then be able to close out the year. The only other thing that I want to talk about on the budget is we've got a little bit of a pie chart here, and so you all can see the pie chart. It's on the back of the frequently asked questions. We're pretty much tied up on most of the things that we do with our budget. We are a people-centric organization. Teaching and learning happens because we have high-quality teachers. If I had all the money in the world, when I win the $1.2 billion tomorrow night for the Lotto, we will go to a one-to-one system, where it'll be one teacher to every student, right? That's when teaching and learning can happen at its most massive impact level. No, I'm not going to be funded there at $300 million, but the idea here is that we have a lot of our money tied up in compensation. That's not a bad thing, but I want to create a little bit of wiggle room in that way that we staff schools. So I'm asking my team in partnership with the community that we get ready to build next year, the fundamental idea that every school leader gets one free FTE to decide what they do with it. So is Gabe here from Bristol? So Bristol's in the cluster group here on the west side of town. They have Suzuki violin for first, second, and third graders. Gabe was able to maneuver some money, didn't do anything wrong. He was just an experienced principal. He took a half a FTE here, a quarter FTE there, scored a little money away there, and he bought something very specific to what he wanted his school to be about, and they're killing it. Now, it doesn't mean that every kid at Bristol has to play the violin, but there's an identity when you walk in the building there that first through third graders are playing the violin. He has other music program there. People are attracted to schools for particular identities of schools. There is no one-size-fits-all solution from here. It's not going to come from me. It's not going to come from the area superintendents. We want our principals to have an identity. So as we build that budget, I want to think about, just in premise, and I know we have some tiny schools and we have some gigantic schools. So when I say one FTE per school, that doesn't mean exactly one per school, but it does mean that I want principals to get a little bit of latitude to understand that I need an extra reading interventionist because I'm super focused on third-grade reading this year, and I just looked at my numbers last year, and it's not going to get there. We should have the flexibility in a $300 million budget to be able to give the principal the chance to make the commitment to themselves, their staff, their students, and their community on what's their bet on how they're going to get there. And then the second thing I want to introduce is this idea of student-based or school-based budgeting. So a little bit in there is in the autonomy of a building leader's discretionary funds. The second is, is the real holder of the money is the student. So I'm asking my team, and this will take several years to get to, but eventually I want Karen, as one of my students, to have a $10,000 bill over her head, and I want her to walk through her experience of the programs that she selects and the services that she needs, and that $10,000 starts to go away a little bit. So let's just say that Karen's here at Coronado as a student, and she wants to participate in a high-end CTE program that we offer through Pike's Peak State College. So Karen's going to allocate $7,500 to Coronado, but because she's going to do half a day, three days a week at Pike's Peak State College, she makes the decision that $2,500 goes to Pike's Peak State College to give that level of concurrent enrollment or advanced certification or whatever it is that we do. Right now, we're a little bit locked up on that because right now we give the money to the school, and then the school says, well, I really don't want Karen to go to Pike's Peak State College. I want to offer that here. But we want to offer such high-level CTE for our kids that we can't replicate it across every comprehensive high school. So some of those really high-end expensive items, anything that has to do with medical, a lot of things that have to do with a home building, particularly things that have to do with cybersecurity, those things have to go to a central location because it's just too expensive to replicate it. And then the student gets that vote, and when the student votes that way, the money follows the student. Okay? So I'm going to pause there. I've given everyone a comment card, so we can do this a couple of different ways. If people are ready to tell me what they want to see in the budget, by all means, I'll give you the microphone, explain what it is that you would like to see and what you think the impact of that will be, and we're taking notes on that. And if you don't want to speak, you can just write it down, and we're going to collect all these. And as we make our way across the system this year, we'll be sharing back what it was that we heard from the community were your priorities in the budget. So I'm just giving you a couple of ideas that I have, but the dollar is actually yours that you're allocating because you're the ones that pay the taxes, that you're allocating on behalf of your students or your children, who are our students to be able to get there. Okay, so if people are writing, which is good. Anybody want the microphone? If not, I'll cold call. There we go. Here you go, sir. And please say your name for us.
Yeah, my name is Jerry. I've had two students here at Coronado over the years. Love the staff and teachers and the student body. We have a, I think I hear the reference, a special community here, and if you go to the Homecoming Parade and so many other activities, you see it. My wife and I, Jennifer, have had three children go through education systems, three different districts in the region in the past 20 some odd years. And it amazed me when we got to D11 in 2015 how far behind we were in technology. We had students in D8 Fountain Ford Carson through 2011. We were on, each kid in middle school had laptop, computers. They were doing presentations that were full-on, multi-platform and digital, and I'm tired of hearing my students come home and say, well, you know, it's D11. We don't have the equipment. We don't have the facilities. We don't have the technology. I've heard it from my son. He's a senior now. He's in a tremendous robotics program, and if it wasn't for teachers funding and supporting some of these and having mentors, some of these things wouldn't happen. And so I'd love us to get to another level with technology and facilities.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else want to double up on technology? I want to give a shout out to John McCarron and his team for getting us the bones that exist for infrastructure for technology. Not included on the red summary sheet were $10, $12 million worth of infrastructure pieces that we're putting in to make us ready to be the district of the future. And I also love our LTE program where we have technology instruction happening in the buildings, but I'm hearing that there's still a lack of interface that the students are getting a chance for. And then Brandon, if you can get a note for me on how it is that we're funding robotics here at Coronado, because I know that is one of the identities of the Cougars, and so it would be great to see that that's embedded and not having to worry about its existence each year. Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else? I'm leaning this way. Great. Here you go. Hold on.
Hi, I'm Jenny Marie Ingram. I have twin freshman daughters here, and one of them has taken interest in drones. So just kind of piggybacking on that technology piece and, you know, building on that drone program so she can continue on. So, yeah.
Was it Jenny?
Jenny Marie.
Jenny. So Jenny, I'll ask you a question in return. If we were to have a massive drone program at Wausen, would your children be interested in an introduction to drones here at Coronado and then half a day, three days a week at Wausen while they're still Coronado Cougars in their junior or senior year? That's interesting for you? Great.
I live a half mile from.
All right. Even better. So that's kind of the vision because it's impossible to replicate that level of commitment, both financially and from a subject matters expert. You know, how many folks do we know that know aviation science or drones to be able to get that right here? But one of my favorite things around Colorado Springs, and I'm so happy to be back here, is that I can go all the way from Chapita to McCullough in 30 minutes flat, right? And so we feel like we're big when we live here because the traffic down I-25 can make anybody pull their hair out. But if you know Austin Bluffs, and you know Union, and you know Powers, and you know Woodman, you know a couple of ways to get around. From corner to corner, we're only 30 minutes. So we ought to be able to provide that type of solution, especially when we have a campus like Wausen right smack in the middle. Not quite the middle, but, okay. Who else? Oh, please. Can you come forward a little bit, too? Because I think we're trying to do a camera thing, right, Rex? Great.
Hi, my name is Monica Peeler, and I teach at Grant Elementary. I'm a reading teacher, and I would like to see funding for kindergarten through fifth grade for Amplify Reading and Lexia. These, this was, we had Amplify Reading, and it was something that teachers used, and it really helped students literacy. Lexia is also a very great program. For those of you who don't know, Amplify Reading is an online program for elementary. We, in order to balance the budget, to have our TLCs, who we need and love, Amplify Reading went away, and that's something that we really need back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Monica, right? Yeah, thank you so much for that. If you've looked at my resume, I have an ed tech background. I did national sales for ed tech platforms, and I understand the value of these extensions of learning, and we have to find the ones that fit for our teachers and the needs of our students. So we'll be happy to evaluate that into this year's budget build. Anything, again, that can extend the learning opportunity for students and/or improve the quality of what happens when we have time with the students is a win-win for us as a district. And we're going to use that same matrix to evaluate other programs that we have right now. So if we're investing time and not getting a return on that investment, or if we've bought programs or committed to philosophies that aren't increasing the quality, teachers don't like it, isn't functional for them, students can't access it, then we need to make the hard decision that says, no more of that. So I appreciate the plug for Amplify, and I'm happy to look at that going forward. See, there's a rule. If you make eye contact, you get the microphone. Anything to say in the back? No? Okay. How about everybody take note and pass it one to the right, and then I'll ask people to read them out loud. If we don't get any more, here we go. Amanda, pass back.
I've got one here. Doug Abernethy, I have two graduates from Coronado and a junior that'll be playing at Battle Mountain tomorrow night in the soccer game. Go Cougars! So my question for you is about academic master plan and academic alignment associated with your cluster. So I'm also the SAC chair here at Coronado, and so one of the things that we've talked about on the SAC is academic alignment. I know there was a master plan previous to you, and Tamara's here tonight, and you're working on that, but can you give us an update and your philosophy about academic alignment from preschool through grade 14? And then also how that impacts budget moving forward based on what you described as far as FTE for schools?
Yeah, happy to talk about it. One more time on your first name?
Doug.
Doug. Thank you, Doug. And go Cougars. Is it state championship tomorrow or?
Second round of the soccer play.
Second round. So certainly we should be celebrating that accomplishment. I know that athletics is important to a lot of parents. It's also important to the parents and the students that aren't on those teams because it's just really great to mention that Dougherty High School finished 13th in the state marching band state competition this weekend out of Falcon Stadium, and I heard about the win in Durango just a couple of days ago, and so good for the Coronado boys for soccer. AMP, AMP is top of mind. We're doing a work session on November 16th to give an update to the board of where we are at AMP, but I'll give just a sneak peek at that right now. And I want to acknowledge you called out Tamara Acevedo, our chief academic officer, is instrumental to this. It was really exciting when I interviewed to come to District 11 because there was a plan in place. There was an academic master plan. And so whether COVID impacted that, whether there's a change in administration, we still believe in the academic master plan. Everyone needs a roadmap. One of the first initiatives that I took on this year was breaking the city down into K-12 clusters because I noticed that there was a lack of continuity for students and/or families to understand that you can easily go from Bristol to Holmes to Coronado and get a continuity of instruction and experience that really means that the Suzuki 1 through 3 program at Bristol better be playing their holiday concert in Darren Smith's beautiful auditorium right over there at Coronado. Because I know this as a parent, as soon as I put you, if you had a first grader at Bristol, in the audience of a high school auditorium, and your kid's up there screeching away on the violin, you will then think to yourself, my son or daughter is going to be first violin at Coronado when they're in 11th grade or 12th grade. We can create a vision that is logical. I'm not anti-choice. I'm totally pro-choice. I just want your choice to continue to be District 11. So I have to sell that to you. And right now, we do a lot of telling and not a lot of selling. We don't make a logical connection between Bristol to Holmes to Coronado. So this year, and I'll start on the west, we have Dr. Brandon Comfort, who's leading that west cluster. Yes, middle schools, high schools, elementary schools have a lot of functional things in common, but the needs at Chapita are a lot different than the needs at McCullough. They can learn from each other, and we're doing dual relationships for folks to see that. But primarily, and I know this because I almost bought a house on White Buffalo in 1991, which is on the west side of I-25, I knew what it meant or what I thought it was going to mean to live west of I-25 as compared to what it meant to live east of I-25. So we need to be able to communicate and identify that the needs in the city are slightly different. There are two primary functions in the AMP that I want to talk about. The first is a quality neighborhood. about. The first is a quality neighborhood school. Every District 11 school should be a quality neighborhood school. There is no delineation that says, you're at an art school, congratulations. You're at a quality neighborhood school. No, no. We start on reading, writing, and arithmetic. We wrap around services to meet our students where they're at, set high expectations for them to be able to exceed their own potential. That's the basic in a quality neighborhood school. Most of that is what you're seeing and what the team is working on now, on best first instruction. How do we partner with school leaders and teachers to get the right planning, the right engagement, and the right rigor into the lesson the first time? That's the foundation of our house. Quality neighborhood school happens everywhere. You're in an online school, you're in a Montessori school, you're in a comprehensive high school. It should be quality. That's the first way to retain families and attract families to come back, and it certainly will raise achievement. And then we've done a lot of work in District 11 in listening to the community on what are the pathways, what are the areas of focus that are interesting that parents want to choose? Arts, STEM, language, what I call experiential learning, which would be Montessori or outdoor schools. Those are kind of the four primary buckets. They need to be accessible and attainable and navigable in all four parts of the city. Now, that doesn't mean we have to replicate it exactly. So we have a dual-language school at Rogers. I don't have a dual-language school on the west side of town. I probably need to be thinking about language immersion, because there's a lot of demand for language immersion. So we're going to come to the board with what the current laydown looks like and where we think that there are gaps. Now, I just want people to open up their minds just a little bit and ask themselves, are there other schools that are already providing some of that? So I'll switch to like STEM. Everyone knows I was a pilot in the military, right? There is a charter school out by Peterson Space Force Base that has a relationship with a local aero club that puts kids in airplanes on Saturday mornings. You want to talk about practice-based learning? I would love to do that. I'm never going to do that, right? I'm never going to get the lawyers and the insurance companies to say, sure, District 11 is happy to sign that piece. But if there's a charter school that's already providing that as an option, and you're super interested in STEM, and you would love to see your kid get some exposure to flight, why isn't that part of our portfolio? We have to think beyond the charter being the enemy and think, can the charter fill an area that we can't fill? So there's a language school, there's CILA, there is a visual arts school, which is already in District 11 portfolio, it's SEVA. But we don't, I never stand up here and talk about SEVA. Does anybody know the highest performing high school on CMAS last year for District 11? It was SEVA, right? But you don't see that. It's not on our webpage. We have to think differently and realize that charters can offer niche solutions that can solve something hyper-specific for your family, Doug, that I might not be able to offer. We're really good at comprehensive high schools. That's what we're going to be really good at. We're going to get even better at IB diploma high school. We're going to make Palmer the destination IB diploma high school in El Paso County, if not on the front range. That'll take us a couple of years to get there, but we have such high-quality IB instruction happening there, and we're just not selling it. We keep telling it. And I'll tell you, my daughter's an IB diploma graduate. This is a pathway that should exist in the AMP. I saw IB diploma change my daughter's trajectory in school, and she passed that test by, you know, one point. She got an 18, I think an 18 was the minimum. She was not the brightest kid at the school, but it taught her how to learn. And once she learned how to learn, she's a doctoral student now for atmospheric science back on the East Coast, because she's an insatiable learner. So school became an avenue for her to create opportunity and not a wicket just to get through. So lots of those types of conversations, but tune in on November to hear a little bit more, and we'll have maps and show you where we think the gaps are and what those opportunities are.
Hi.
Hi.
Anton Shulsky, Palmer High School, IB middle years coordinator.
Great.
My family has probably 140 years' experience in District 11. My father-in-law was a counselor. My wife taught and was here at Coronado as the gifted and talented coordinator. I've been at Palmer now for 30 some odd years. Daughters both graduated from Palmer High School. Eldest daughter is now a first-grade teacher at Midland. Youngest daughter is now the theater arts teacher at Swigert. So.
So you're all in. I got it.
We're all in.
And we're very thankful for you and your family.
Yeah. Couple of things. One, on something you just said about IB being part of the AMP.
AMP, yeah.
Yeah. I was on that. I kept pushing for it, and kept pushing for it, and kept pushing for it. And so I really am going to hold you and the board feet to the fire.
Yep.
On that, because I've been part of that program since 1992, and I agree with you, right? It's the best thing. I think it's one of the great things for students, even if they don't get the diploma, right? All of our ninth and all of our 10th grader students are IB students. And hopefully, we're going to get 300 of them doing a personal project this year. We'll see. So there's one thing for there. The arts, you talked about that. Daughter is a theater arts teacher at Swigert. They're having their first production this Friday and Saturday. Had been invited to it. Would like to see a little bit more from the district in terms of getting that message out there. So I think that goes a long way in bringing people into the schools, just like you said. But again, it's on us to get that message out.
Absolutely.
And it needs to get out there. So I'm hoping that that can happen between now and Friday and Saturday. Dad's got to defend his daughter.
Yeah, absolutely.
One thing we haven't talked about that's on the menu, and I could, by the way, spend a lot of time talking about the budget, is security. This is going to be really hard for me to talk about, and so if I get emotional, I'm going to apologize upfront. At Palmer, we were, we had a survey that was done, or an evaluation of our security, and we made some security upgrades. Well, that's all well and good, except now we have a doorbell that students have to use to get into a building that's not monitored by security, but is monitored by a secretary. Because for whatever reason, it was easier to send us to a secretary than it was to our security. When we talked about some of the issues there, one thing that came up was the fact that there isn't a camera on the outside of this one building. It should be cammered, right? If, if in fact, security is there, and it's a priority, then these are things that need to happen. And why it doesn't happen, I'm not really sure. And so it needs to, right? Because you talk about the safety, it's there. That brings it to another issue. The other day, those of us who get the alerts from D 11 got an update on what had happened at Dougherty. Thankfully, everything was good, and I appreciate the conversations and the updates. We at Palmer have not been given that same kind of courtesy. We had a situation that occurred. I know you're aware of it. The problem is, is that the staff is still in the dark. And with the staff still in the dark, there's a lot of conversation. In fact, one of the conversations that came up was, oh, we get a message saying that Dougherty is secure. Well, why is, why are we getting a message on that, and why are we not being told about incidents in our own building? And to that end, there were some comments made that I don't think you want to hear in terms of how they evaluated why one school gets an update while another school doesn't. And so that's a real issue, right? If we're talking about equity in the district, and that's part of what all this is about, that equity has to include security, it has to include openness, it has to include dialogue with the staff, with the students, and the parents. And those are things that aren't happening, not across the board. And so that's got to be built into our budget as well. And I know that's not exactly part of the budget, but it needs to be.
No, it's great. We appreciate the feedback. And so thank you, Antoine, to you and your family and the commitment to District 11. I'll go backwards on that to stay freshness in mind. I'm confident that the analysis we're doing right now will make recommendations that all primary exits and entries are cammered. It is just a no-brainer from a safety perspective. I'll ask John to follow up at Palmer and understand why we're having students buzz into secretaries as compared to security, when I know we have mobile kiosks and kids at Palmer are swiping their way in and out.
They swept their way, yeah, they swept their way in, and then this is going into another building that's already part of the interior complex. So I get it. I understand safety.
Yep. And then, and then communication, you know, I'll work with the area superintendent and the principal to understand, we're not holding, there are no secrets. You know, I get all the safe-to-tells, and then I get all the texts, and I get all the messages that come over email. I'll try to figure out why senior leaders at Palmer are not included on that, because there's no attempt to hold anything in the dark. And I was involved in the one-person situation, which I won't discuss publicly.
And I'm not asking you to.
But I put eyes on, on that, and I made the ultimate accountability decision that said, I believe that this is, in conjunction with the safety plan, the right solution for the needs of the student and the safety of the community.
But we also have to keep in mind too, that with that is also the safety and the integrity of the staff as well.
That's right. Well, when I say safety of community, I mean that all the stakeholders in the building. So it sounds like there's just a gap in closing that loop. Dougherty at 1,800 kids, literally, both David and John would let you know that three days a week, and Dr. Mel Packham's daughter goes there. So if I haven't heard it from them, I certainly hear it from Dr. Mel Packham on, did you hear what happened at Dougherty? Yes, I hear what happens at Dougherty. You know, we, we want to get to a place where our children understand the impact of the words that they use. And so I sent a letter out earlier in the year that said, any student that makes a violent threat against another student or a building, they have to clear through my office before they go back to school. I didn't do that because I seek to be omnipresent or omnipotent. I did that because I wanted to understand what is motivating children to think that it's okay for me to plaster an AK-47 over your picture on social media and not understand the impact of that. And it kind of dawned on me that when I was at Mitchell for 9/11 celebration, that this is a generation of children who don't have some of the experiences that we have. And so I would say to kids when I meet them, you know why you can't say bomb or terrorist in the airport? And they say, no, they don't know why they can't say that, because they don't know 9/11 the way we know 9/11. And they don't know that people used to sneak bombs on airplanes in Lockerbie and blow airplanes up in the middle of the sky. But I was able to communicate to them that what they say and what they do has ramifications and impact. And, you know, fortunately, that we've been able to reintegrate those families back in, because kids are showing remorse, and they do understand that. And I ask each one of those students to then become a champion for carrying that safety message forward. Because I can't stop it. John can't stop it. David can't stop it. You can't stop it. It's the peer group that can stop it. When somebody says it's not funny, then somebody will delete the post before they make the post. But, but I do appreciate your focus on safety. We have very intentional dollars built in through this last budget reallocation and the budget going forward. You know, I've said this, I worked in Detroit, I worked in Oakland, I worked in DC. Even my time here in Colorado Springs, the thing that keeps me up most at night is the thing that I don't know. I know what I know. It's what I don't know that keeps me up at night. And it's never going to be the kid who decides to come guns-a-blazing through the front door. That's not how kids do it. Kids know where the weak points in the system are. So we have to be thinking one step in advance. I could go to nearly any elementary school right now, and there's somebody who's got the back door open, because it's hot. Well, it wasn't hot today, but it was warmer, and they got it open to get a breeze through their building. You know, so we got to consider those trade-offs. There are no back doors open for breezes in the building when we're talking about safety. One way in is the front door for any visitor that's coming into the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pass the mic. Here we go. Amanda's got one.
I would like to see long-term sustainability for staffing and consistent programming, and for a follow-up on the feedback shared in the community circles. I know our people are our greatest strength, and a good measure of success is reduced staff turnover. I would like to ensure that our budget does not put test scores before the humans that we are raising. I would like to see funding put toward best first instruction in the D 11 graduate profile. Our district needs consistent funding for behavioral interventionists and professional development to lead to long-term improvements to safety and community. My biggest concern is, do all of our students have equitable opportunities to access and participate and engage in learning, and does our funding reflect that? I care about transparency and accountability in spending, and understand that our community does not like surprises or unsustainable changes. I would like for all parents to be able to see exactly where the district spends all taxpayer dollars, and to be able to understand the reasonings for those allocations.
Hopefully, you're starting, thank you for that, Amanda, and we spend a lot of time together, so I appreciate your specificity. I hope those that participated in the Fund Balance Task Force are starting to see that we're seeking that same level of transparency and authentic nature and making those connections. And so, you know, we come here with this. It's on the webpage. President Mel Packham sent out a very specific letter to the community. This idea of sustainability. I have lobbied in some of my other roles at the national level to say, there's not enough money in public education, bar none, not enough money. But then I've also lobbied to say, there is more unaccounted-for money in public education than I know what to do with. We had a billion-dollar budget in DC, which I was in charge of, and anytime we were short on money, my, my budget team would come to me, and they go, what are we going to do? And I would say, just go shake a tree. And they go, what do you mean? I go, just shake a tree. There's all kinds of unaccounted-for money. We had $75 million of fund balance that's built up over several years within District 11. Think about those $75 million being programmed the day that you knew that you had access to that dollar. Think about the difference it could make. And so Amanda, my obligation to you and the community is, is when you do your taxes every year, you know, your personal taxes, I want to be the guy that writes a $500 check, because I got the most out of my money every month I had that money. I don't want to be the person who gets $5,000 back from the government and goes on vacation. That was lost leverage. So it's, the same dollar in August doesn't have the same dollar value in April or May. We want to program our dollars in August against the needs that we have, that we've heard from the community circles, and that we're doing in partnership with the DAC Budget Committee, to understand where you all want to put the dollars, and then measure whether or not we got the return on them. So yes, there is fluidity, because I'm not going to commit to a program for 10 years. If it didn't work, then we need to move on, and we need to own that as not, not a failure, because we'll fail forward. We'll make decisions. We're making very specific decisions right now on where is it that we need more coaching? Is it another TLC? And there was, someone made a comment earlier, it was, I'm sorry, Monica, and I'm not sure if she's here anymore, commented on having to lose Amplify for an extra coach, right? And so the bet was, we want coaching right now. We felt that investing in the adults was more important than extending the learning opportunity for students. Those are very hard decisions, which we seek to make with you. And then ultimately, the board is the one who passes the budgets. But you'll see that even in the Fund Balance Task Force, 90% of what the community asked for is covered in either this or in some of the priorities that we made in the capital budgets piece. The board asked us to be more specific on enrollment and achievement, and then we went back and did some of those. But nothing got flushed away, because we heard from the community that these things weren't important. I think the idea of professional development came up either from you or from someone else prior as well. We, we need to have a conversation and understand what does it mean to invest in the time and the training that it takes to make our professionals as capable as possible? We all know that many of our teachers have not been in a higher ed program for several years, and for anyone to think that UNC, UCCS, Pikes Peak State College, CC, or any other degree-granting institution has our strategy in mind in their training is far-fetched. So as we lean into best first instruction, that means we need access and time to be able to deliver that and not have it feel like something else to do. So we were talking earlier, Doug, to your question about AMP, I said to the staff earlier, I said, if you're an AMP school, if you're an arts elementary school, you, I'm, I'm ready to pay for it. You're going to get one extra day at the end of your One Plan Symposium to review, because you have quality neighborhood school and arts. And then as you come back for the next year, we need to pay them a half a day or a day early to be able to come in and plan. You can't say that I'm a quality neighborhood school, and I'm an arts school, and I'm a free and reduced lunch school, and I'm a Title I school, and I want a new strategy, and I want to do all that, and do it all in the two or three days that we give schools to be able to be prepared. So we, as the board, and as I recommend a budget to the board, have to be planning for that. But then we need to make sure that everybody's all in on that. If you're at an arts school, if you're at Martinez or you're at Columbia for an elementary school, you better damn well really like art, because it should be an art focus. If you don't, we will find a new home for you. We have enough vacancies every year that if that's not your shtick, and that's not your thing, then come and tell us, and we'll find a different place for you. I don't want to convince somebody that doesn't believe that art can be revolutionary to a child's experience in elementary school that this is a good thing for them to do. That's not what you want, and it wasn't a good fit, then we'll find a good fit for you.
Comment on safety. Safety keeps being repeated. I am the, I have been the nurse in almost every one of these schools on the west side. One thing we are not doing is full-time health assistance. Our students do not have seizures when our health assistants are there. We have not funded, and we've brought, the nurses have brought it up. We have not funded and we've brought, the nurses have brought it up every year, we need people on our buildings, we need it funded. Halbert, I also had last year, I think, they have made the choice within the school that they take the budget that they get from D-11 and add to it out of their PTA funding because it is an important person to have in the school. I would like to see full-time health assistants in all of these schools and I would like the district to pay for it. It should not be something that we are battling. We have students living with diabetes, we have students living with seizures, we have students living with anything under the sun. We have students who have never been diagnosed before have seizures in our building. We need staff that is delegated by the nurses, trained by the nurses, to assist those students if God forbid that happens. And it's not a priority and I don't understand why it's not. So I would like to see it as a budget item that is a priority. So.
And I'm sorry, I missed your name?
Oh, I didn't give it, sorry, it's Christine Nix.
Christine.
And one point I would like to make too, because you kind of commented between West Side versus non-West Side, I've had Chapita for four years, I don't this year. But when I had Chapita and when I had West, or when I had Chapita and when I had Midland, it's not a West versus non-West situation. We have students with needs, every school is different. Just because they're on the West Side does not mean that they have the funding that they need. Does not mean that they don't have more, they need, there are several schools that need a lot on the West Side. Just because they're on the West Side doesn't mean there's like, ah, the West Side, they're taken care of. No, we have students in need. And again, Chapita is very self-sufficient, that's a very different bubble compared to some of the other schools. So comparing Chapita to like another West Side school isn't fair. I love Chapita, I adore Sarah Scott, she's fabulous. It's not the same dynamic across the whole West Side.
Yeah, and so I appreciate the clarification. Christina, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and so my comments on the West being the West was, I want all schools that have a much easier opportunity to matriculate to Coronado to see themselves as part of a community. And there is a great difference from Chapita just down to Jackson, even though they're literally just a couple of miles apart. And I certainly understand some of the challenges that exist as we get down into West and to Midland as well. To your, to your comment on healthcare, it's certainly something for us to evaluate. It becomes a competing interest that we eventually have to decide. When I talk about equity, I say equity is when you put your money where your mouth is. And so if we believe strongly enough as a community and as a board that that's where the money should go, then that's where the money goes. The challenge is, is that once the money's gone, and unfortunately, when there's limited resources, a lack of a disaster sometimes becomes an affirmation of a good decision. Doesn't mean it was a good decision, but sometimes it can be seen that way. I appreciate you, thank you.
Thanks.
I think we're going over this way. Go ahead. You got, is there one right there or not? No, here we go.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Saylor and I have two grandchildren in District 11. And I want to talk a little bit about tutoring funding. So I know the district has gone a long way and put some great programs in place and we're doing a lot, but I know that some kids are still falling through the cracks. And I've got a granddaughter who's an example of that. She's got a great teacher at Scott and the teacher has been working with the mom, trying to come up with some ideas to help her with her reading because she's behind. But at the parent-teacher conference, it was at a point where the teacher's actually recommending holding her back. And that won't work for my granddaughter. She's, you know, one of these mature kids that wouldn't be able to handle that. So going to the discussion where you were suggesting at some point the money being attached to the child, couldn't some of that $10,000 of my granddaughter's go to the family to help them find tutoring outside that would help her because holding her back isn't going to be an option? So that's one thing. And then I wanted to add to that, we've heard conversations about dyslexia and making sure that we're funding that or programming that and giving that attention.
Thank you so much, Cheryl. Tutoring is certainly one of our high-impact levers that we're trying to staff. It should come as no surprise that there is a shortage of teachers, not just in District 11, but across the country. We have a three-pronged approach right now on tutoring. We have several of our schools with after-school programs that have made relationships with former or retired teachers. So they're not all retired, but there are teachers who are seeking to still have impact, just not at a full-scale, full-time level. And so Monroe is an example of where we demonstrated that on a visit last week, where they have probably half a dozen retired and/or former teachers that they pay a part-time salary to, to be able to deliver that high-impact tutoring. We also have nonprofits that we are partnered with. The Children's Literacy Center is another example. They're currently at Columbia and Keller and they would like to be able to expand within either our before and after-school programs or in other schools that don't have that type of programming. They too are challenged in finding the right qualified staff to be able to get there. I've asked my CAO, Tamara Acevedo, to actually look at for-profit tutoring companies. One of the things I said off the cuff as a joke the other day was, if I would have had any idea how hard it was going to be to get tutors, I would have started my own, you know, company and just put retired teachers off of, what's the name of the retirement system here? PARA. Take teachers retiring out of PARA and put them as 1099 contractors and funnel Esser dollars for them to come in and deliver high-impact tutoring. Because we don't get the ability to extend the retiree because of the state laws. There were some waivers over the last few years, but those have sunsetted in a way that, again, the challenge in tutoring is getting the body there. And so if there are teachers that are listening that want opportunity to make extra dollars, we pay for tutors. So contact us at the district, we'll find the right schools and the right programs, particularly with the after-school programming that we have, that can extend you in an additional income source to get the value of what you do every day in a little bit further for kids. The challenge is, is people are working really hard. Director Nelson commented at the board meeting the other day, is how sustainable is this? The question is, is how long do we want to accept being 158th out of 178 in this state? So I happen to think it's sustainable for a couple of, three to five to 10 years for us to be able to make sure that a second grader in the system now is going to exceed their potential by the time they graduate in 12th grade. There was one over here, thank you. I'm going to bypass you, sir, I'm going to go to Jessica because she was kind enough to say hi to me earlier.
Thank you. I'm Jessica Klumpberg, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Wilson Elementary. I had a couple teachers and even parents have a couple of questions that they sent to me. And some of the parents didn't want to come because of one big concern. A lot of our families speak Spanish. And a lot of times even watching online, they don't understand what is being said. And so one of the things I would love to see put into the budget is having a translator for these open online, maybe it's a different link for them to click on, or maybe having a translator here. Because the second concern that I have goes along with that. We have an incredible translator, actually we have quite a few at our school. And they are, most of them are ESPs. They are hard workers, they translate for us for conferences, we had conferences last week. One day we had one translator. And on that one night, we needed at least three or four. They took extra time to translate for us over WebEx, over the phone. We have one of our incredible translators, Lou, she actually sits down at Second Cup of Coffee, which is the time for parents to come to learn about the district, and she translates for them. But they're not going to get all the information from one meeting every single month. I think that's something that the district needs to provide because they're not and they're not meeting the needs of all of our families.
Thank you, Jessica. A giant yes-and for Jessica. We actually have five translator positions open at the central office staff level. We can't fill them. We can't find, so we have to rethink the solution. One, Sherry Colback's not here, but her and the area superintendents are leading an initiative to create some partnerships with local universities where there are Spanish speakers to give us some part-time support. I've also asked that we let a contract to actually just pay a contractor to provide translator support. So if I would have normally been able to want to employ five full-time staff members, that probably means I can get three contracted staff. But we have to provide that because you're.
I agree, just one more, what about having something built into the budget where we can take like, for example, our two kindergarten aides that speak Spanish, they translate for us on their own time? What about providing them, giving us extra money that we can pay them more because the ESPs, they're not even paid.
Absolutely.
It is pathetic compared to the districts around us.
So I'll get you an answer on that, I fully support that. It's a great initiative. We have stipend opportunities, just need to be able to create the scope around that such that it's all parent-teacher conferences, which is four hours every month and a half or whatever it is that we can build that, and then make sure that we price it appropriately. But the challenge remains, not the idea, but the workforce and the way that communities are engaging in a public way has fundamentally shifted. There are members of our community who can make as much money on unemployment as they can in the opportunity of which the employer can provide. And although I would love to give everybody an immense raise, we are a 300-ish million-dollar budget of which we have to be able to balance that book every year. And so the challenge is, is for us to think creatively about it and are there other ways for us to provide the service, which is translation? Whether it's full-time stipended ESP, which could really be a big boom for somebody at a personal income level, maybe it's a lean-in opportunity from a language student at a local university. Translation is what we need. How we get it is up for conversation, but we're interested in it. I have time for one more question. Yep, sorry, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goll. Ken File, principal at Trailblazer Elementary School. At the beginning of the town hall, you mentioned that D-11's getting ready to start growing again. And you talked about charter schools and you talked about charter schools not being the enemy and I appreciate you saying that. My question is, are you talking about adding more charter schools to our portfolios? And if so, especially for our low-enrollment schools like Trailblazer who are just getting down this pathway as an experiential school, which is maybe a bit esoteric for people who don't understand what some of those experiential pathway schools might be or experiential schools. Do, what kind of impact, if we are talking about adding charters to our portfolio, what kind of impact might that have on the non-charters, especially with low enrollment and trying to really get the word out and attract more people?
So, you know, to continue the relationship that the board has had with the community, last year the board approved the LSIA charter, which was then not prepared to open. So we approved the premise of what the charter had to offer and said there was demand in the community for what it was that they had to offer. And then, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but they were well below a dozen by the time we got ready for school opening, which isn't enough kids to open the school. And so with any charter conversation comes authorization and then accountability. And so right now, the district has the ability to authorize charters. If the district chooses to not authorize a charter, the charter can then appeal to the state, of which then the state will push them to CSI, which then becomes the state's arm for authorization to the charter. And so that's an important distinction because currently in District 11, there are roughly 1,200 students who attend District 11 authorized charters. There are 4,600 students who attend CSI authorized charters that are within the boundaries of District 11. So that combined demand signal is roughly 55 or 6,000 kids. That's the size of District 12 Cheyenne Mountain. So there's a demand signal inside our system, whether you're pro-charter or anti-charter, that says 6,000 out of the 22,000, or I guess out of 28,000, if I were to add them, we have 22,000 traditional kids. 6,000 of them on top of that are choosing to go to charters. So don't quote my math, but that's somewhere between 20 and 30% are saying, boy, that's an interesting option. So the board, and I think the board has been right, has to accept and review the charter application on the validity of that school to meet both an achievement and enrollment and a sustainability space for that. So yes, we will entertain charters as they come forward. Where they get placed is up for conversation. I think it's great that you called out that Trailblazer has been well under-enrolled for a very long time. Now, that's not necessarily your fault. If you look at the boundaries that are set in, because remember, boundary is almost a fictitious term in a system of choice. You, by boundary, don't have enough kids to be at 75 or 80% capacity. By boundary alone, you're probably at 55 or 60%. So you're asked to steal from Peter to pay for Paul to meet an expectation. So it's a real concern and we've decided the capacity committee recommended that we not go forward with a re-boundary. Because again, boundary in right now is about closure and about consolidation. When we're a system of choice that's finely stabilized, so now we think that we can start to bring some people back. I know where your school is, I'm up there all the time, love to ride my bike up there. You're very close to District 20. I think the idea of an experiential school in Trailblazer where you already have Spark Online right next door to you, which is a different version of an experiential school, can be attractive to the community where you live. Now, does that happen overnight? Absolutely it does not happen overnight. How long it takes to get there? I don't have that answer, I'm on month four. But, and how we house charters? I don't think that we have traditionally given away semi-occupied buildings to charters in the same space. But I promise you, if you wanted to light a fire in understanding how do you increase your strategic vision and understanding your position, you could have a charter on one floor and you're not a two-story building. But, you know, there are plenty of systems in the country that have co-located schools in the same building. You actually have one right now, you have Spark Online and Trailblazer in the same building. So whether Spark Online or a charter were in that other space seems like the same comparison. It just doesn't feel the same because it doesn't have the word charter in front of it. So I don't really think that you and Julie, who is, where Julie, you're over here, I don't think you and Julie are at war over kids, I think you've found a way to coexist and meet specific needs of families as they elect for that. We are a system of choice whether we want to be or not. So we have to accept the fact that the way to win the choice game is to up the ante of the experience. And Sarah Scott's not here right now, and yes, I understand the neighborhood at which she sits, but it is a phenomenal school and people are clamoring to get there. We built the pre-K strategy based upon demand and it wasn't a surprise to me that the highest, earliest demand was at Chapita. Because it's the highest performing elementary school. People vote with their feet. And I always close my eyes when I say this. If you're a staff member here and you live in District 11, but your kids don't go to District 11, raise your hand. So I close my eyes because that's fine. You should make that choice. You should make the choice that is best for your family. And, but that means that we have to feel the same way about every other family's choice. And if that means that there's something that they don't like about Trailblazer, we need to figure that out. And if they like Spark Online better, or if there were a charter school there, which there isn't, but then that is just the way the system of choice works. In other states, the, there are rules of occupancy that then make the building available to an alternative school option. Because in some places, the authorizer owns the building and then says if there's room, push them in there. So it's a great question, Ken, and there's no answer for it, other than we've flattened our enrollment loss and we're getting ready to increase. We will increase by attracting more families to our traditional schools and we will increase by hearing the demand signal of the community that says, we like charters and we've been very happy in charters. So we have to be cognizant of both of those. Okay. So I want to end on a positive note, which is, I really appreciate everybody taking this time to be here. The room is filled in much better as we came overtime. And so I appreciate everybody making an hour out of their time on a Tuesday night, the 1st of November. So we're there, it's almost Thanksgiving, it's almost Christmas, our next one will be the first week of January, on our first day back, January 5th. And we're, which school, Deborah? We'll be at Doherty High School. And so we're super excited to have the Spartan Experience there. I want to thank all the Coronado staff, I want to thank the board members for being here and anyone who has got to get back to their family. So thank you, I'll stick around for a couple of follow-on questions, but we're good for that. Thanks, Rex.